Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, Mr. Myers made a motion, is there a second? Second, Mr. Grove, on the favor, aye.
Aye.
But no? Reports of Superintendent Budget Calendar.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is the time of year where we approve a budget calendar by which you conduct business related to the development of the budget. So that is there for you. I don't want to delay it. So, January 9th is the Superintendent's informational presentation of what the Governor gives us as the government budget. And then, just like a week after that is a work session depending on what we know about final numbers. And you can see the February date, March date, or regular meetings, but then now the public hearing on March 13th at 6:30 on the budget.
It's still working. So our... So, people should know that we start working on that thing already between December and things start coming together, right? And so, as there are comments along the way, you should be aware that it's okay to. Historically, we have received input, even in regular meetings, or from comments.
Absolutely.
We should make sure that people are aware they have an opportunity. I don't want us to get too... It seemed like last year, there was some discontent that people felt like they weren't part of the process, or they weren't allowed to be part of the process. And I found that comment to be unjustified, because they have a lot of opportunity to be part of the process, but then if you don't anticipate in these types of things, or even have any work session, then you're not going to know.
We're doing our best to gather information at the school levels as well, and be very proactive in our approach in examining the budget now with different lenses and instructional materials and different curricular needs and things at the school, so we'll be ready. But until we know what the Governor's going to do with our budget, it really kind of puts us in a... And then once the Governor finalizes those numbers, we can plug in our numbers, see what it does to us, and then we have a better working number, too.
But lately, we haven't gotten much for a really long run.
That was one reason why I asked you to take it.
That's right.
And another thing, I heard from a public perspective, it's difficult to understand, is there's the Board, the School Board has a public hearing, and then the Supervisors have a public hearing on the very same school budget. And so, it's almost like, even though that's not our meeting, it's almost like I'd like to see like an informational... Do we have that here?
At the bottom, we have...
Oh, it's TBD?
Yes, say.
Okay. So it's down there, and it would be good for everybody, so this is ours, this is theirs.
One other reason, have we given any thought to the March 13 meeting, which is the School Board's public hearing? And having that in this room, we would never feel we had never felt the other way. And it seems closer to me, and it seems like people would feel more comfortable giving testimony or requests in the building, more than here. This seems more...
Well, it's a level... It's a level playing field.
Yeah.
It's the... It's ominous stage. The problem is, it does get, it can get crowded.
Well, if it does, then we will get all the time.
That's right.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there.
It doesn't take that long.
It's amazing to me, because I'll guarantee you, there hasn't been 20 people in the last four years, rather than here. Two, five.
So we'll ask for action later on this meeting to adopt and go ahead and advertise early, and that is the Supervisors will get theirs together, too, once we know about the dates and time and all that, we'll add.
And we could always change this location, and it's on the same building.
I mean, I'm just throwing it out there, something that every year I sit up there and I look at 12 people, and six of them speak, and...
And you felt loved there.
I said, I thought maybe four people were probably...
Well, you do feel separated from the people we set up on the stage. It's true, Steve.
Well, we are separated from them.
Yeah, but this is different.
You've got to talk to somebody on one, on one, aside the budget and everything else.
But this stage is more intimate to me.
All right, thank you.
All right, and then, importantly, too, we have some policy revisions we'd like to talk to you about, and I'm going to ask Ms. Witt to come up to the podium and talk about these. As we're getting ready to get into budget season, we've been examining our policies and our budget lines, Stacey and I, we have the lens of equity, and that's kind of been at the forefront of our minds to make sure that our funding is in line with requirements, regulations, but also it's equitable and provides benefits to the same circumstance employees, the same benefits. So, and we're finding a couple of things that we need to tweak, because it will affect people now, and also have budgetary implications, and we started to work on that. So, Ms. Witt? Would you like to give us an update on this?
Doesn't sound like it's off. Are any of ours on?
It's very hard to hear.
Um, so, Shannon asked me to talk to you today about some... That better? Asked me to ask to talk to you today about some inequalities that we found among employees. And so, since we're trying to even the playing field for everybody, one of the things we wanted to look at was sick leave pay. And the reason is, we have three VRS plans inside the division, which is Plan 1, Plan 2, and then the hybrid plan, which went into effect January 1st, 2014. And so, while this plays a role, and what I'm going to talk to you about is sick leave pay, I thought I'd explain a little bit. So, VRS Plan 1 and Plan 2, they do get better rate of return on their retirement, better than hybrid. So, VRS decided that they would supplement that by doing a short-term disability for those employees, which means if, because I'm a hybrid, if something happens to me, I get in a car accident, I have to have surgery, I decide to have a baby, which is not happening, but any of those things, and I miss seven days, consecutive days of work, then I can apply to be put in the short-term disability program, which means I would get my pay. And that isn't coming from some other company, it's still coming from the school division. We're still responsible to pay that same term of disability to the employees. So, with that being said, if the same thing happens to our VRS Plan 1 and Plan 2 members, they don't have that back then. They have to only rely on their general leave days they're given and any sick leave days they accumulate. So, once they go through that, there's no pay for them. So, if they decide they've had a baby, or if something happens and they get in a car accident, once their leave is done, they have no source of income, nothing. And to top it off on that, then we say, okay, well, you haven't worked, so you need to pay you for your full amount of insurance. So, instead of encouraging people to have bigger families and bring their kids to our division, we're kind of saying, hey, sorry, but we're going to help you, which kind of stinks in the long run. So, Shannon and I talked, and we felt like there were some things that could be tweaked with our sick leave pay, just to make it even for everyone. One of them is for the hybrid employees, since after their first year of employment, they are offered the short-term disability program, or they're going to offer, they're given it. We decided we would say, okay, if you want to be part of the sick leave pay, that's fine, you can donate your day, but once your 12-month period is up, you're no longer eligible for the sick leave pay. You solely rely on your short-term disability. For our VRS Plan 1 and Plan 2 members, we thought it would be great to take out the word catastrophic from the policy and change it to any non-work-related illness or injury, because if it's work-related, then of course they're going to be workers now. With that being said, then it would take a claim to maternity leave and allowing maternity and maternity leave for our employees, just the standard six weeks or eight weeks based on if it's a national job or if it's six months, I mean, the same time. Now, the employees would still be allowed to do FMLA, they would just be responsible for the additional time that they take for that. But we want to make them feel like they can have a family, or if something does happen, we're not going to say, oh, sorry, you know, this is all on you. So, those were just a few things. Let's see what else. Oh, be able to donate additional days. Right now, we just, the men are hired, we give them a form to say, if you want to participate in sick leave pay, please donate one of your days of general leave, which is fine, so people who want to participate, they can do that. But we also thought, in order to keep the sick leave bank running, because it's only funded on people's days, it's not given by the division at any point. If at the end of every year, they say, hey, I have three extra days of general leave, can I put that in sick leave pay? Or for our employees who have been here for an extended period of time and have over the amount of sick leave days they can get paid for at termination, they can donate those days instead of, at the end of their employment, they're trying to use 50 days of sick leave, because they don't want to just give them up. So, those were a few things we talked about, just to make it even, so everyone is getting pretty much the same benefits as being an employee here and not, you know, you don't have to worry about, well, one person is on a retirement leave and she's getting paid because she has a short-term disability, but sorry, you're not getting anything for it. Kind of unfair, and we're trying to eliminate all of that, obviously, to make sure everyone is even.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Can you? The hybrid versus 1 and 2. Everybody that's hired after the 14th are hybrid?
Yes, if they haven't been in a VRS program before, then yes, they are hybrid.
All right, so they automatically have this short-term disability?
After one year.
And someone who was hired 15 years ago cannot opt in to that?
They could have at the beginning of the...
That's what I thought I remembered.
Yes, they did have a option.
In 14, they could have opted in.
Yes.
Am I not correct, when people were saying it's not a good thing to do?
The main reason that people didn't opt in was because the return on retirement is not as great. And where VRS Plan 1 and Plan 2, it's funded a lot by the employer, in order for a hybrid person to get anywhere near that rate of return, they have to invest their money. So, it's kind of like a 403D, you can opt to put this money into that.
So, the ones that are the old parts, pardon my French, but they get the advantage of a higher retirement and the people in the hybrid stuff, so we're going to even give them more advantage? That's the way of looking at it.
That's why I'm trying to get...
It is. I mean, hybrid has the option of, like I said, I can donate or put more money, put more of my money in, and the school division will match it to two and a half percent. So, it's not like it's just my money, so I put in four, they're going to match me to two and a half, which is nice, but yes.
Did anybody who had the older version, say the hybrid?
I'm not sure, because it hasn't been used yet.
I think I remember the answer is no.
I mean, I wouldn't. I don't think anybody did, because I remember if they did.
I think...
I'm trying to remember the meeting, and then we did have a meeting about it, I remember, I recall that, and we all kind of individually sat down with our plans and decided, you know, long-term retirement, retirement's better over Plan 1 and Plan 2. You still have the option to make this fine later if you're on hybrid, it's just the already established benefit in the time as long as...
The only concern I have is that we're infusing the VRS 1 and 2 table without enhancing the hybrid.
We're offering hybrid the same thing for that first year, but they don't have it either. So, they would also have that advantage. The number of people this affects is pretty small, because a lot of our Plan 1 and Plan 2 people on our staff aren't in family situations.
So, we're only, this is only family leave we're talking about, only?
It's using the...
No, but it's sick leave, too.
It's sick leave saying, so the...
It's everything else. It's not just, if you're having a baby, you're going to get six weeks of paid leave. I mean, if you broke your hip and you had to be in a hospital, you're going to get six weeks of paid leave, where you wouldn't otherwise unless you have the... So, it's like giving 1 and 2 hybrids. A lot of short-term disability. I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just trying to understand it.
And that's what we're doing, I mean, we're just, I know it sounds like we're helping, we are helping them, but it's hard when you are working every day and something happens and you lose that pay. Yes, looking now the road to retirement's better, but in that moment, it's still scary when you don't have the pay, so I think that's...
But that's why people need to protect their leave. I mean, if you have a leave, then you don't take mental health days. I mean, I, I had this battle with my daughter-in-law all the time.
I had a one that was a moment that came to me.
I mean, yeah, I have a hard time with people just taking a day off, because they just take a day off.
Because they have a headache.
Or whatever.
They treat sick leave or general leave sometimes as vacation days, or, and...
Yeah, I'd rather give everybody two more sick days.
I never did, but that's... It's not against what's there.
Yeah. I mean, I...
It would be a policy change, it's not unusual either. We looked up some other policies that...
Yeah, we've talked here, it was the same thing. But their difference is they don't offer sick leave pay to the hybrid at any point. Oh, sorry. They don't offer sick leave pay to the hybrid at all, not even the first year, when they're not covered by their short-term. But theirs is any non-related injury or illness on our group.
So, they're hybrid?
Well, for their hybrid, doesn't get any, they don't get any sick leave pay.
Well, they get leave.
They get their regular leave, that's given to them as a good advantage, but...
But they're not eligible for the sick leave pay.
No, certainly.
Which makes sense for a year. I mean, you still got, you got 12 days, and you got short-term disability, you don't need sick leave pay.
Only thing I would add is, after being a person employed by a large company, I was very fortunate to have a short-term disability planning, that I was able to take advantage of. And so, I don't know how many of you have ever done this before, but what happens is, someone in Florida or Kansas calls you to tell you when you're ready to go back to work, you know, technically. And so, it's a very, when they really don't have any connection to the situation or your status, anything at all, it's a very impersonal plan. They, they're very impersonal. They do base upon, you have this kind of surgery, you have this kind of surgery, you have this type of treatment, therefore, on this week, you shall return to work, and I, you know, you try to make the case. I can't drive an hour and 15 minutes yet, trust me, and they're like, your wife can take you. You're young. I'll say is, when you, this is the way things are going, so I'm not opposed to it, I appreciate that you looked into it and know we're even field with other school divisions regarding how we do it. Just know that it can be a very impersonal alternative to, you know, when we get a request for sick leave pay, it's a local group of people that know the situation and decisions are made in a profession, and that's not where we're at.
Right.
I just want you to be aware of it, it's not ready.
I think we move into catastrophic, I never did figure that out. That could be gone yesterday, sort of.
It allows us better flexibility to take care of our own people, but especially those that we see, and we used to do this. It used to be rule practice for us to be able to allow folks having payments to take sick leave pay after they've completed their leave in order to be paid for that time that they say, whoa.
Well, we have a limit.
Well, six weeks for regular work, eight weeks for cesarean section, and FMLA says you can have 12 weeks guarantee in your job back, but those are the limits on what we do, and it's always replenishing the sick leave pay, because we have much...
What if we did something like this, and think about it, because it's not, what if we increase the number of days people can donate? And build the bank? Was that, did I see that somewhere?
Yeah, we, so that they can donate, I think we...
You just said at the end of the year, I'm talking about right up front, saying, all right, I'm healthy as I can be, and I'm going to donate three days right at the beginning.
Well, you can also do that at the time, and sort of quest them this stuff in bag, you can still do it.
Sure.
We can do it during our open enrollment when we are...
That's what I'm talking about.
So, I was standing about...
You can donate up to three days. I don't know how many people would do that.
I put five in there, just as a little limit, just up to five.
Or whatever.
And the other thing, too, I keep a record of who uses our days, who donated our days, so, I mean, it's a live number that I have, it's not someone, it's 250. I mean, we keep track of what's going on, so we know, and if it gets below 50, which is our number, then we go back and ask, hey, if you still want to be in the sick leave pay, you need to donate another day.
I can remember in my former life, that when the sick leave bank, if we had 2,000 employees, or 3,000, whatever it was, when the sick leave bank got to a certain number, there would be a memo that would come out and say, we hit our bottom limit, everyone that's involved in the sick leave bank has to give back even another day. And it's just automatic, they just took a day. If you want to be, well, if you want to be, if you wanted to continue to be in the sick leave bank, you gave another day. And that's fair to me. It seems fair.
What is, why do you put the objection to doing it at the end when you know you have the leftover, rather than doing it at the end of time, when you don't know, if you need them?
Except that, except that, you know, for, the thing I think is important to try to eliminate is retirement year vacations that start in January. Because you have to use up that leave, and I understand that, if we pay more for leave, and pay for more leave at retirement. You know, when I retired, I had 15 days of leave, and I got paid for it. And maybe we need to think about that, and it's an encouragement, a stick.
We did pay for leave.
Yeah, we did pay.
Up to a limit.
I was lucky if I cleared 20 bucks.
Yeah.
And it's a nice policy we have, it's one of the benefits that we're commended for once even the VAS salary schedule, people that came in, consultants from VAS, said, you know, you have very, have you happy with your leave? It's very much of that, I said to my administrators today, Jeff Blue, administrator and CEO there, who has a very flexible leave policy, pretty much says, we care about you, we trust you, take off when you need to, and, you know, that's why you have the things that you do.
Like IBM used to be that way.
Yeah, and it greatly increases productivity, and, but Jeff Blue's doing great, but for us, I think that was the essence of our leave policy when it was established, back from what I can tell, and I know he's done some of that, too, in the history of things, so I think that essence is important, and when we are talking to women and families and really being supportive about this policy, I can see as a young person coming in, or even a Plan 1, Plan 2 person, saying, I'm not going to be able to stay home for even just the six weeks without working up this much money for my benefits and my pay, that's a hard hit, especially when you're teaching, that's...
Well, it says your boy has the right to amend it anyhow, so what we...
And that's what we're asking you to do tonight, because it does affect some of our employees this year, it does affect some employees. So, usually, we do give you the 30-day time, but for this particular policy, because it was going to affect me, like, like, to offer it up for Action League, Stacey, for adoption, getting the board's issues and things like that, but...
Any questions before we proceed?
I don't think I know enough to ask any questions. Well, I mean, I appreciate the study and the preparation, so it's something I would recommend, I'm stepping away out, practicing, preparing, so.
Well, it seems to me the changes you're making is more easier for everybody to understand. I mean, I, I never did understand the catastrophic, because we never could, there's nobody really there, and when somebody asks, well, we didn't know what this is, real thing or not, don't you remember? Well, that's what I'm saying, that's kind of... Well, that's one day.
The way I look at it.
Well, since you're moving.
You're not saying that's...
For some people, they're not gendered catastrophic.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Little boys, and I was five-year-old, five years old, and I wanted to die, and catastrophic, you know?
That's great. Thank you, Ms. Witt.
Thanks.
Speaking of policy, there are a few superintendent divisions I'd like to work to, in particular, if you'd like to bring up, Ms. Johnson and I, to discuss, those regulations are put in place by the administration to implement whatever policy it connects to. There are a couple of regulations that we're going to talk to you about that we updated, just as information, you know, that people want to be, so, Ms. Johnson, would you like to?
So, this is tactical? Is that an X and L file?
This didn't turn up right. I have gobbledygook.
There you go.
Show that with a X and L.
Oh, that doesn't work.
Yeah, that's where it shows up.
Yeah.
No, he's...
That's something else.
Do you have a heart cup?
I've got one, yeah.
I have a one, hang on.
You have more heart cups? Oh, it's good. It's here.
Sorry.
We're flexible, it's here. We're good buddies, I like that.
Yeah.
First time I ever had something I wrote called gobbledgook.
All right, in policy, GCPD, if you go down to the fifth paragraph on the policy that's in the School Board, not your revision, but in the School Board policy, it says that we will have administrative regulations developed for the dismissal or placing on probation of continuing contract teachers and probationary teachers. And so, in researching that, we didn't actually have a regulation that went along with that. So, I did my research, looking at regulations from other school divisions that went with this policy, and I only was able to find a couple. Two of them that I saw, Charlottesville City and Radford, they pretty much regurgitated the policy the way that it was, with a little bit more language added to it. So, what I found was a regulation that was done by New Kent County, and I felt like that met the spirit of what this regulation was asking us to do, which kind of broke out the process of how are we going to work through disciplinary action for a teacher if we have to do suspension, probation, or move into dismissal? And so, taking the New Kent regulation, along with the Virginia code that cited in the regulation that you have, we put together kind of a step-by-step guideline for the administrators to work through, should we end up in a situation where a staff member would have to receive disciplinary action. So, that is it in a nutshell.
This did not exist before.
This did not exist before.
Is this on our list of actions for the night?
This is a regulation.
Regulation of leave.
It's just informational that it is there, and it's a process that... Thank you, Ms. Witt.
Thanks.
I'd have that one. All right, another one, speaking of leave, that we want to bring up, with the lens of equity and regulations that we've been talking about in my admin meetings as well, there's a regulation about annual leave being accumulated and being able to pay out up to 10 days each year if money's available for 12-month employees, which is generally, you know, mostly administration. And you can use that leave, and then you can pay it out. That's a tough thing when you're budgeting, to understand how much, and equity, it looks very inequitable, but, you know, that's a, the essence of the leave is to make sure you have enough to take off when you need to, as a stressful job, you get... is to make sure you have enough to take off when you need to, as a stressful job to get that and you have a good leave policy, but the 10 days per year of availability of funds pre-approved by the Department of State and my town. And here, deleting this regulation completely, just taking it out, we don't need to, and our administration is 100% committed on this too, and we talked together and just said, you know, that's a tough thing to sell when we're going to have more leave than we can use. We know that already because of the way we all work together. We don't take many days off, so we're going to accumulate leave anyway, which when we do retire or whatever, we have a nice better day. We stay a long time to indicate I don't need to make that option. Much better to probably donate to the sick leave bank or something like that rather than requesting for funding those days back. That's quite a bit of money when you talk about the number of 12-month people you have on that and, you know, when you're trying to budget for things like staff raises and facilities updates and things.
So you would get kind of a GCPD part too?
Yes, yes, sir.
So is there anything that?
Well, not completely, I'm sorry. Just this, just the paragraph about the annual leave and the form, sorry. That part, that part.
I learned how you're going to.
No, no, sir. We're going to have leave, absolutely. We need leave, but we're not going to have that paragraph where we had this thing with a form. So the form, when we delete it, we'll solve.
So that's also a regulation?
That's a regulation.
So we don't have to. That's a regular one. Yeah. Yeah. You may want to look at the payout, the retirement payout, and the number of days people can collect, the number for what they, how much they can do that during the budget.
Yeah, and it's a tiered system based on how long you've been here and then you have different days. And we can go over all of that and give an update on what that looks like over the two years we look at that. But it is, yeah, of course, it needs to be here longer, who's want, best, and who wants you to stay and will take care of you later.
And I figured, you know, people put in 45.
It used to be, they've updated.
There should be a reasonable payout.
I would only, I would only say, if they've been here and they're getting ready to retire, it's good to have a heads up because there's a budget impact.
True.
That's why I find that was really sweet.
Yeah, if five choose the same year.
Yeah.
We'll talk a lot about this as we're building the budget about continuities and things because that does scare me. We have an awesome staff, a veteran staff. Five or six of them decide to retire the same year. I have no control over that, but then, oh, we're bankrupt. So we're going to need to really.
Other way, you're not.
You're going to have to write a big check.
How long people have been here, I mean, that's what it's good. They can, they can.
For that year.
Well, at the end of the year, we got.
Yeah, when you have no money.
All right.
Okay.
Glad that's gone.
Okay. Now for the exciting part of the night, Ms. Robin Bolt. She gets to have the feeling of somebody clicking for you.
I'm so glad to be back with you guys again.
Isn't it nice to be here?
I probably shouldn't say anything.
No, no, that's good. Let's move on.
So I took over facilities mid-July, and it's a hard job, and trying to budget for it is even harder because it's an unexpected issue. So researching it, we had a preventive maintenance that ran out in July. And the county had it, we didn't have it. So it was controlled by the county, they had a three-year contract, and we had no control over it yet. They, we didn't even know when preventive maintenance was done, we got nothing, they got everything. Which is fine, because that was a good thing to be happy, and I just think we should have been looking at it.
That's right.
So what I went to Shannon and said, this is what I'd like to see happen, because I'm a pity-pincher. I'm very much into the budget and to try to find the best bargain, I think everyone will attest to that, I'm laying carpet tomorrow because we're saving $3,000 to do it. So we have a project to do that. But what I went to her with to say, can I do an RFP to see if there are any companies out there who can do a preventive maintenance and a comprehensive? So that if something breaks, we're covered. We don't have that unknown. And it runs anywhere from $6,000 to $10,000 to replace some of these units. So I put my RFP out and I had Little Burger and Honeywell come back to the pre-bid meeting. I took them around and I was completely honest with everything. You know, we had none of our exhaust fans working at elementary school, which they are now, but I mean, I was completely upfront of where we were and what they were getting into. And Honeywell pretty, pretty much knew what it was. I mean, excuse me, Little Burger, but Honeywell didn't. And so they came in and I broke down what we spent the last couple of years on HVAC, so they would know what we've been, you know, they'd have an idea of what's been breaking and what's not. So Little Burger chose not to even respond to the RFP, so to be completely upfront. But the reason for doing it is because of budget. I'm just somebody who, I watch everything, and to be able to predict what I'm going to spend on HVAC. If we have someone who's vested in doing preventive maintenance as well, the comprehensive, I think they were doing a better job of preventive maintenance, because that's where they're going to make their money. If they keep it running and it doesn't break, then they're going to make money. So I think there's incentives there. With the bid, we asked for air quality for energy audits, so that we can get a handle on those. We have one person we're going to for these problems now. Just looking back over the last three or four years, since I've gone back and approved all the HVAC stuff, we've had various, we've had Johnson Patrol, we've had Honeywell, we've had Little Burger coming in and doing it. And so someone comes in, it breaks, you call somebody else, and there's no accountability for that. Equipment though, we've had, kind of become an instance, Sheffield's classroom, it broke and there was a sensor gone, so they came in and fixed that. Well, then, a month later, whose air conditioner broke again, and it was another problem. This way, they have an incentive to check it out while they're all in there, get it, and get it done. Administrative costs. So we're paying one bill, Stacy doesn't have to write a bunch of checks to different companies, it's, we can follow the trail. And the number one thing is to, the learning environment for students. So anytime that I look at anything I do, the first thing I think of is, is this good for our kids? And I think this is good for our kids. So if we can make a comfortable learning environment for them, it makes all the difference. If it's cool enough, warm enough, the air quality's good, then we're good to go. So last year, our total cost were $81,456.33. And the way I found that was I went through all the HVAC part, then I went to where, and Jimmy had to do this because the budget line wasn't big enough to handle what was being spent. So he'd go to other line items to buy power cell. So I went through the whole facilities budget and found everything, and that's where that number came up with. This year, four months, we've spent $26,743.85, and that's without the $26,000 on preventive maintenance. So our total projected cost, if we stay at this rate, is $106,231.55. That is not a mother. So I felt pretty good about doing the RFP, thinking maybe we could do a little better. So Honeywell came back with the B bid, so they're often do it for, it's six months, $46,388. It would be $79,523, which is lower than the past two years. Now, I'm practicing that because the cooling tower, as you're aware of, has to be replaced at some time, and they will not take on comprehensive for that. They will do preventive maintenance and try to keep it going, but if something breaks, we're responsible, which I can't fault them for that. So I was pretty happy with this, and it did take some negotiations and some finagling and twisting, and they were very receptive. And I have to admit, we had our, our heat went out of school board office. And I tried, first I, because I was still working with Honeywell and wasn't sure where we were going, so I called Little Burger, and they couldn't be here for a couple of days, so I said, so I'll call Honeywell, they had somebody there that afternoon, and he has been great. He has worked nonstop, I've been very pleased. The references, they work with 22 schools, so in the RFP, I needed a list of references, and I actually called school districts, and I just wrote down notes of what they told me. One of them was Nelson County, and the person there said they worked out soon. I was like, what? And they said, yes, because it's, they've been able to budget and they've had less breakdowns. Middlesex County, they said the service is fantastic and they're very happy with it. And then Buckingham said, just being able to budget and know, not have that unexpected as well, and the response time was great. So I didn't get one negative reference checked on them, and I found them responsive. So there were 22 school districts, so I feel confident. Cory lives right down below where I live, so he's the main technician that will be working with us. And so I feel confident that when we need to be a week here, they came in on Saturday to get it fixed, which I found.
When they, when they give you a quote, so what cycle does this work from? And they say a year, is it a year that starts as soon as we offer a contract?
They, they want to start December 1. What they want to do is do a three-and-a-half-year cycle, and if we did three-and-a-half years, because we, of course, we said we wanted a three-year contract, and they offered, they said if we do three-and-a-half years, because it's set to go up 3% each year, or three-and-a-half percent. So I negotiated with them to get the prices down, and then if we did three-and-a-half years, so counting this year, and then a three-year contract in the manner of this year, they brought down that increase to 3%. So it saves us 5%, and you talk at $80,000, it's pretty significant, you know, it's a savings.
So we basically paid from December 1. We would propose this to a contract from December 1 this year to November 30 is the next.
It will be till July 1. And then when our school year starts, their contract is low-rated.
So it's three-and-a-half-year contract?
Yes, sir, correct.
Does, does the cooling tower PM, is that included in this 79,523?
It's, yes, the preventive maintenance, so they'll clean the filters, they'll check the, but if something breaks, we have to.
But that's, but that's included in the 79?
Correct.
All recognizing there's no guarantee on that stuff?
Right. Now, and I'll be, we do have some things that aren't working now, like we have an exhaust fan in the woodshop that apparently hasn't worked for 10 years. We can't expect them to cover something that hasn't worked for 10 years. And so what I did was I created a list of all our equipment, and these are the things you're responsible for. About this cleaning day, $46,000, 46 months, 79, the year. It's less than, I mean, you get it for the year thing. It's 46. Well, it's not six months, it's seven months. It's seven months. It's December 3, July. It starts December 1. So it's seven months, so it's not, it's not 5%.
That's 79 is what it would have been.
So we just divided 12 and 79 times 7.
Which, by the way, we'd be spending anyway.
We'd be spending more than that. I agree with you.
For the rest.
Yes, sir. It's, I estimate, we just stay on the curtain rate we're going.
The only sad thing is with an RFP, you get one response.
Yes.
Pretty difficult, though, I mean, for this area, this area, I just want people to know, it's very common to put out an RFP and get one response.
I went to the, I even took the RFP to Knowlins and HVAC, we deal with all the HVAC contractors, and they handed them out for me, and I went to the home show with those experts, I was trying to get some. So I'm pretty happy that Honeywell has stepped up a bit.
And we were brutally honest with, you know, with the pre-bid meeting, and when Robin and I were talking, you know, these numbers that she was showing me, and we did some projections, and it's very scary with our system, and we need to keep it going, you got to have heat. So we needed some, like you said, predictability, we need to be able to project, and we needed certainty, but we needed that comprehensive, which is something we hadn't had, because that's where our cost is getting so inflated, and that's why Little Burger told us at that meeting, you know, sorry, I was $50,000. $150,000 at least, sorry. Couldn't even do it. So we are so excited that we got this.
And I like the accountability, I think you're right.
Yeah, one person, if something was wrong, I never would call, say we need to fix this. And we can't, if we find, there is a pause in there, that if we find that it's not working, then we get out of the contract. I mean, there was a pause in there.
We tried to skin this guy a lot of different ways. We, we've done joint things with county, we actually hired the person that did the entire county and worked here, and I guess, you know, we've tried a lot of different things for, we had last year.
Have we, have we talked to Johnny about getting involved in this contract as well?
Well, what happened was, they were involved, and it was tough for us to track anything and running through. It was a partial contract where they had control, but we were paying a lot of the benefits.
Well, yeah, I understand that, no, but I mean, now that we have the new contract, are we subject as they, give me back on that?
If they, they may, actually, because they're doing their feasibility facility studies right now, so if they see the benefit of this, because I don't think it was there before yet, they're still feeling that out, but.
Are you telling them that they don't have the control?
Well, they gave us back the $26,000 at that meeting to put toward our contract, because it did make sense that the school's facility should run through the school budget, it's just so much simpler, cleaner, it should run now. It follows our procurement process mechanism. So to be able to do that, the county's very supportive and glad we're moving this way, and having, of course, given the board supervised this update, totally brought it to you, and the board, we don't need approval on this, but if it's consensual to move on, we will have the contract looked at by the attorney, make sure it's all straightened out, and then move forward, because it's going to save a lot over the course of the next few years. So, well, this is an outstanding job, making sure that we got the best prices and the best possible company to do it, so we're very excited.
Just make sure it's a very small contract, so we can get very quickly, or just by the minute, you know, it's a good piece of work.
Well, thank you. It was a lot of work, but it's, I told them all, it was successful.
And so we would expect that, because we don't meet again until the second week of December.
Shannon would sign the contract. We'd start contracts December 1.
And so the consensus, really, we'd love to do this, we'd sense it's a good way to move.
From December 1, starting July 1.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for the word.
I think that's all of our thoughts.
All right, Ms. Marder, we have a.
We had, but I didn't know. I should cast for me going. But they did have a nice meeting. The board considered two requests for an educational enrichment grant brought by two high school staff members, and Mrs. Rickley spoke briefly on the redesigned guidance program in public schools and how students are being prepared for career, college, trade upon graduate, and trade on graduation for. And upon Kevin's request, the film of the eighth-grade academy that was shown at our own school board meeting, it was shown there, and it was accepted, everybody enjoying that. And Brookline, after-school enrichment program manager spoke on the last session of after school, 34 students attending the first call session, with a second call session starting this afternoon. I hope you enjoy.
Larry, do you have a MBGS?
No, we don't. We don't have, we don't have a meeting, but I have a question about Headwater.
Yeah?
I noticed that the veterans day, that there was a group that sang, and is that, that's something we haven't seen before. I mean, is it a mini choir, or is it one of the Headwaters' promotions?
Did they show up? They were driving by.
And they were all dressed alike, and it was really kind of nice to see.
I like to say it's a lot of choir bands, but, yeah, a group that works with Brian, Pastor Stu and Sophia Hernandez, she's incredible.
That's true. I mean, she ought to be singing the next Super Bowl game. Well, that's true, I mean, she ought to be singing the next Super Bowl game.
She is. So, yes, that was a nice touch.
You could actually understand, you could understand the words for the national anthem, which were quite nice. But are we gonna do, I mean, that's my, that's my lead-in to, do you plan on doing the summer coral thing that you did last year?
We have plans.
Wonderful, I mean, you didn't get to see that, you missed it.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. One thing about Mount Vista real quick, we did have an informational meeting to see about kids coming into the program and applying, we opened up the elementary school, the youth teams to show up.
Wonderful.
Which is pretty awesome, because now it's a competition for these few slots we're going to have, so.
Eighteen, nine, three, 11, nine, two, ten?
Well, it was open up for eighth and ninth primarily, but ninth graders who would be able to apply for their 10, 11, so that's huge. And really, really, my gallant group, so.
We have, we have figured out a way to rag on that.
We have eight.
We have, we have, we have 10 right now.
10? Yes, we do. We got two with at-large. We have eight, eight slots and then two at-large.
We have eight slots.
And two at-large.
And we could, maybe, I don't know how you lobby 15 slots, I don't know how that works.
It was tough, meaning block here, arm wrestling.
Yeah, well. Maybe, maybe you and I'll have to ride through the next meeting, we'll figure out a way to do that.
Yeah.
Because I can be.
There we go.
All right, thank you. So moving on to public comment, does anybody like to share anything tonight with the board? Yes, Kevin?
I'm here from Wakefield District, and I'm coming to in that role, I'm taking off my pinwaters hat for two seconds and coming as a parent. I just wanted to commend the school leadership for the great response time we got from the unfortunate accident that happened last week. Information came out very quickly, you know, very accurately. My child was not involved in it, but I also got to know about the accident, so, you know, when I was actually at the elementary school, helped me in some ways because I decided not to try to go to my office, but passed me that way, the other way. But it was just wonderful having not only the update of when it happened, but the assurance that people are on it, and then continual updates to let us know what was going on with it. And I've never said it before, I have to say, it's Johnson, I love having her voice being the one that's on it, it's just a very calm knowledge, if we've got this under control kind of voice, it's wonderful. So I just wanted to make sure that at least one parent commended you for doing that, thank you very much for everything you did, to reach where everyone is, nothing's going by.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, that communication was so important and a great precedent. You were telling me too, from your perspective, from a volunteer.
Yeah, I think I was like the third or fourth person there, but the, the papers and Facebook and all the other cool things where, where information gets disseminated. I talked about how well the first responder did, how well the sheriff's department did, but it bothered me that nobody said how well the staff did. And I'm coming at it from a different perspective, I guess, than a lot of people. The staff, the ones that I saw on the scene, handled the whole situation perfectly, and you could not have been. I, I didn't get the robo calls or any of that kind of stuff, but I'm told, even a former critical parent called me and said how pleased she was. The information got out, it was clear, it was concise, people were still hysterical, but they're gonna be, they're gonna be. But from a staff, from a point of view of being at an accident, seeing a group of people working together, it was just a, a little inspiration. One thing that, that I do want to do, I want to see where the bus situation is, because I want to see what the insurance company's gonna do with it. Because what we would like to do, it's very good, our department, is use that bus as a demonstration bus, so that we can do training for the whole county with all firefighters and with all BMS people, to use the, the bus for practicing, there's a whole state process on education for school buses. We don't have the facility to do that unless we have a bus to do it. So that's a, you know, kind of offhand request, get the bus.
Very good.
Yeah, and we're willing to do it.
I'm working on that right now.
All right, is anybody else? All right, moving on. Moving on, is there a motion to approve, approve the budget calendar that was presented earlier this evening?
Sure.
Got a motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Johnson, any discussion? Call a favor, aye?
Aye.
No, no, Mr. Grove, is there a motion to approve the policy revisions that were presented this evening?
Certainly.
Motion, Mr. Johnson, is it a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Grove, any discussion? Call a favor, aye?
Aye.
There's no, so, is there any new business? We, we are attending, some of us, the DSA conference on Thursday, some on Wednesday, our newly-elected school board member, Rachel, is also gonna be attending.
She's still going.
Get exposed to, get exposed to the conference, and the neat thing about new board members is it's, there's a fee, so.
Good one.
Yeah, it's, it kind of helps you with your, so we're looking forward to that, and the next regular school board meeting, December 12, at 6:30 at this very location. And at this time, we, we're gonna take a motion, we're gonna close session, as soon as we make the motion, we'll then take a short recess, let everybody go home. We will be, we will be taking care of personnel and coming out and certifying and making a motion to accept personnel, in case you want to hang around, it should be done in 20 to 30 minutes, not even 20 minutes, okay? If you care to stay. We have a motion.
I'm moving to the board convening, close session for the following purpose, to discuss and consider the appointment and staff for coaching and classified positions and designation of the classified position, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A, and then.
I have a motion, Mr. Johnson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, turn your arm, call a favor, aye?
Aye.
Close it out. We'll recess now.